Oh, man, when I know, I mean, this was just me and you here back when we were.
Yeah, I'm like the meetings that pissed the school off.
I know, it was before y'all, but that's something that's big on the school system. They've had some kids almost run over, and it is, I mean, there's people fly through there, and I'd be having ball games or even near a school, they cross the road. So it's a bad situation, so if there's anything we can do about that, I mean, I think that is a worthwhile project. It's been on the radar for at least five years that I know of, so.
Mr. Campbell, end this project, does it deal with these speed bumps and stuff that comes into that part of the project?
We didn't do bumps or humps, but we, there's a diagram on there that shows some of our recommendations, and it was basically, basically our last proposal to the school system when they approached us about a lot of their concerns. So it's multifaceted, but it includes, and this is detailed in the estimate too, on correct school zones, so that would include flashings, crosswalks, rumble strips, not bumps or humps, but rumble strips. And then also, I think the superintendent is interested in adding some of the radar speed signs, kind of as a, as a school board activity here in addition to this. But a lot of it in our recommendation was cleaning up the access management, so it was wall-to-wall access where people could go anywhere, and this will restrict that and channelize that flow to a protected crosswalk. As well as the traffic calming measures that go along with the school zone process, getting that proper. You know, we talked about a lot of this back when it was a concern, we looked at traffic data, we did speed studies, and we came up with some recommendations, but the fact is a lot of this involves markings and legends, and it's really hard to justify spending a lot of money on marking and legends when you have really poor condition pavement out there that you know has very limited life left, so. But that's a portion of it, you know, the also adjoining those documents or some pictures that show the condition of the pavement, and a lot of that's worst-case scenario that we took there, but, you know, the whole stretch of road which makes up a good project is just in poor condition.
What would we use to limit access and reach out on traffic with like road rails?
That, that's an option, typically just raised concrete islands, or, you know, in this case, something similar to what they have there, which is some raised beds, you know, anything like that, as long as you have the clear zone satisfied, anything to, because you're really delineating foot traffic, you know, not vehicular, it's pedestrian, pedestrian traffic. This estimate.
Well, guardrails probably wouldn't work if I went to the name put there, because I see them, kids at Bridgeport there, the Eighth Street Bridge, jump over those, climb over those, really just instead of going around the intersection.
This estimate includes decorative raised brick flower beds, and we had even had a conversation taking it a step farther with the school board, hey, if you guys want to come in and do handrail with, you know, something that suits you on both, you know, if you want to make an addition to that, we can have those conversations, but we, you know, in doing this federal aid project, we have to stick to items that exist within ALDOT specification, so.
Mr. Dukes is, you know, for our conversations, he's been really positive about, you know, if we come in and do something, he's willing to put dollars in to, you know, put up his speed readers and, like he said, maybe some kind of fence in, something, so he's willing to work, work with us, you know, on top of this, to try to do some things for kid safety, so he's been positive about that.
I think in that drawing, we had a, we had a boat, maybe a raised, raised bed with a handrail, well, it was in, it was a detail that's not included in this, but it was, it was in other discussions.
On this picture, Jonathan, where it shows restrict vehicle and pedestrian traffic, that's, that's all agreeable with them, I know you don't checked into it.
We, we did, yes, sir. Matter of fact, when, when we first started having these conversations, we did could decide cars were parked similar to that diagram you see, and, you know, it was a, it was an instruction for pedestrian traffic crossing the roadway, being in between cars and then entering into the roadway, you can imagine, was an issue just not only for the pedestrian, but on coming traffic, so immediately, the principal at the time eliminated parking over there, so I, every time that I've been by that area, they're no longer parked in that fashion. So I think they're willing to follow whatever protocol we set forth on, you know, fixing, fixing their concerns and making this as safe as they can for pedestrian and vehicle traffic. Any other questions about sixty-one, and I'll briefly touch on sixteen and ninety?
See, we got, we got road counts on these.
Sorry?
Vehicles per day.
I was looking through the.
There's something on that, where you were talking about flower beds on here or things like that, maybe something the roadway department may want to work with, and think this is a little bit.
Okay, County Road sixteen, that project that we placed on here is county, it goes from Highway seventy-one, which is in Dutton, all the way out to the county line. This is a large project, if you notice, on my house cover, lower traffic and comes with a larger price tag. We left that together for the reason that it was done all as one project last time. There's not an obvious division point in pavement condition, as, as I think was seen from the pictures that are attached, but it is a lengthy project and it's past pavement preservation stages, so ideally, a lengthy project like this, which is similar like forty-seven, it would be best to catch it at an earlier stage with a less costly treatment, so that we don't get to this point where, you know, looking at almost a three million dollar price tag to do that project. But we want to include it because it's a major collector, as you can see from the pictures, attention is needed, the score is, is lower, it's last resurfaced in two thousand, but we're looking at almost six miles, so it's, it's expensive. And lastly, County Road ninety, that's Highway seventy-three to the state line, it's located in Bryan, high traffic, a lot of folks take this route, you know, going over to Georgia, last resurfaced in two thousand and one, not all that expensive due to the short length of it, but it is a major viable route for a lot of people, and you can see the condition is not, is not, not great either. So a little bit about how we narrow this down, you know, we look at, we take considerations on those that have received paving in the last ten years, and then we look at the scores that are received from the evaluations when we evaluate major minor collectors per the ALDOT review process. So they're scored, and then we, you know, factor in the data that's on that summary sheet about the traffic and, and condition, and then obviously the price also. So aside from the pavement preservation project that I've already touched on, are there any questions about what we've laid out on the projects?
Do you know offhand on the free repaving projects, what the scores were on those?
Yes, the only thing I don't have is the data we scored, but I do have some scores. So County Road sixty-one, that's an excellent question, the last grade I have on it is an eighty-nine?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. County Road sixteen, the last score I have on it is eighty-four, and County Road ninety, the last score I have on it is a nine, and for forty-seven is a ninety-three. Now, your local knowledge of your district lays in there possible, so these are, these are just suggestions on what we think would be wise choices. If you have something in your district that is overlooked, you're not going to hire our payments, let's have a conversation about it, let's get it on here for review, we'll get some facts laid out, so if there's something that you know is worse, or you know needs attention, or has a lot of traffic, or you want us to take a look at it, please, let's talk about that.
I wouldn't mind seeing, our lowest score, Rose, do you have, you know, if you want to run that back maybe next time?
Well, one thing is that, too, these are just for the federal money, right? So all I mean, like we talked about one earlier today that Mr. Rich brought in, but it did fall under, it's not a major or minor collector, so.
The thing, getting out of that, talking to score, and we see lower scores, we have is withstand the, there's a possibility of losing federal funding if you have a certain amount of those are not kept above a certain grade, you know, just to make sure that we're not letting any slip through the cracks and, you know, put that funded in jeopardy, two or three, five years down the road if we address something.
Absolutely, we can do that, yeah.
They always bring good projects, and I'm sure there's several that, that almost made the sheet.
Oh, yeah.
We're not at a shortage of stuff that needs to be done.
Right, yeah. Absolutely, yeah, we can, I can get you a, a sheet, a sheet showing the last score they have, and get those, get those for you. There are some, there are some eighties, you know, lower eighties in, in the mix.
Eighty is what they want to stay at, eighty or above?
Seventy-nine, I believe, and there's a number of years that it has to be seventy-nine or below for consecutive years before you jeopardize that, which we never have, where those are current funding, we want to make sure to keep an eye on that year to year because at some point, we're not going to be able to keep up. Yeah, that's, that's a very good, very good one.
These experimental things, too, Jonathan, I know you checked on our last year, where they're doing different kinds of pavement, I know down in Decatur, they've got some things that are on one of the county roads I'm saying, and, and most of, most of our roads are too far along, I, I think, far as the ability to come back and do anything, is that correct, last year, you want to check on some of that?
Yeah, you know, ideally, pavement management, if your, if your roads are categorized, then good, okay, poor, then ideally, while working on your backlog of poor, you're taking a good thing, and you're doing a little something to them along the way to keep them from dropping down into the okay and then the bad, okay, so you're, you're setting aside some portion of your budget to be able to apply to that good inventory you have and keep them from dropping down. Now, the problem comes in when we only receive five hundred thousand dollars a year, and in order to get a contractor to mobilize and do a project, you need about two miles worth or something, and so it costs about, have all the money we get every year to get a project, so without, without obligating more funds to that, it's difficult to, to justify working on a good road only when we have bad roads falling pieces.
There's a spot down there in Decatur where I was on Highway twenty, and they put trucks over in the right lane, I guess they done probably a mile of it, and I wish we could find some information about it, they done that last summer, and it's, it's heavy traffic, you know, see where it might have stayed.
There are a lot of pavement preservation technologies out there for good pavement, and it's, it's attractive to be able to keep your good roads good, and still work on your bad.
Jonathan, can you look, like going to bulky materials, the, the Department of Transportation is, is like sprayed?
Yes, sir.
Coating or sealing on that, and I noticed when I hit it with a truck or even a car, it's got a different sound, is that something that they're looking into?
Certainly, what you're talking about, how it would be in, what they think?
Similar, it's, it's more, Jason, it's a thicker, Mr. Green, what's a thicker application in that, but that would be an application, that's HA5, it's not part of, we did a couple test sections at DOT with that, and there, that and other products like it, for what Mr. Sisk is looking to, if you have good pavement, it's like a sunscreen, it's a protective.
I know when I hit it, you know, you can tell the difference, the sound on the road, all you're talking about there.
As far as pavement preservation goes now, we're not doing nothing, we take five-year, six-year, seven-year payments, and we have started a crack seal program, so sealing those cracks at year five and six and seven, something we can do with our means, it's cost-effective, and it buys us time, so in the meantime, until we have more obligation in funding towards that, we are taking, just know, we are taking some steps in, you know, what little ways we can, but to try to preserve some of our better pavements in higher traffic levels.
Right, just for people's information, how much funding you want to tell them, how much funding we give the federal dollars per year, I guess how much is pulled in?
Yeah, five hundred thirty-three thousand dollars a year is, is what we receive annually, so the, that sounds bad, it is bad, it's not good, I guess, but one catch to that too, it's only applicable to about twenty-five to thirty percent of our roadway network, so out of those twenty-two hundred lane miles, you know, you think about here at LA, only twenty to thirty percent of that can you spend that five hundred and thirty-three thousand on, and that includes bridge work, so then you're left with your local road network, which is the majority of the network where we try to do our local road paving with it, you know, it's been about three hundred thousand dollars a year that we're obligated toward that, but you can imagine, out of that thirty, thirty percent of that network, one, two-mile project, you know, is going to get the bulk of that funding anyway, so we, we have a tremendous amount of bridge work that needs to be done also, so we try to do rehab projects or cost-effective means to patch them back together, and then, or, you know, we have to save up a year or two resurfacing to do a bridge, I'm pretty sure.
That's, that's one point I wanted to make, especially for the media, we spend less than a million dollars a year where we should be spending eight to ninety million dollars a year, so that's the difference, and what we should be spending over there, I think the community needs to know, is, you know, they, they are our own, they want what we do.
If I'm not mistaken, six years I've been here, our federal dollars, our federal major minor collectors, we've only spent the federal dollars on it, we haven't spent any local dollars on that, that five hundred thousand dollars a year is nowhere near enough to keep up about any lane mile, and that's why I'm looking at the grading, because I want to make sure that they don't fall too far behind and lose that.
Anything else on each real project?
This is not something that has to move forward, any face that you're not comfortable with, if things are a good idea, like Mr. Green was talking about, I can get you some sheets, the predulation sheet showing the roadways, the section the projects are being broken down previously, and the grading to go along with that, so just, just when you're ready.
Is everybody good with, maybe put this on the next work session, that'd give everybody time to kind of look at these different projects, and we can discuss it again in the next work session.
Yes.
All right, we'll put that on the next work session, then last item we got for discussion would be the number seven, road lane strapping, Mr. Campbell, you will go over it?
Yes, sir, thank you. In your packets, you should find a list of strapping that we're proposing, and what's typically been done is we will accumulate citizen concerns, project pieces or projects that have been paved, and compile a list, and have that prepare at one way that permits to begin the strapping. So that's what the list consists of, that you have before you, and they are of various reasons, I can just talk a little bit about some of those, but County Road eighty-five, that's me road, it says plant request in the comments portion of that summary sheet, the safety director from the plant informed us about the strapping, it was an issue, he requested that we revisit that, look at updating strapping, and put this on that back, and it is one, seventy-four was a citizen request, two sixty-five the same, one hundred was a remnant of a project that, that did not get strapped, that needs to be, and so on down the list, so if you have any questions about any of those, or if you'd like to see pictures, or look at the roadway, or talk to us about it, please, please do so.
Any questions over here? Is everybody good, put that on next week's meeting, or on next Monday's, if you're ready. That's all we have, our discussion items, next people for staff, the committee?
None, sir.
Mr. Campbell, you have anything else?
I don't have anything in particular, except to support your decision, if we're going to move forward with personnel policy revisions, that needs to be done, the last time I think the commission did it, with, they had a similar study in the year two thousand, eighteen years ago, and they never did follow up, didn't pass anything, so it needs to be done. If we need any help?
I appreciate that.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes, sir.
Mr. White?
All right, I guess we made some big comments by the commission, Mr. Benwell?
No.
Mr. Sisk?
Nothing.
Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rich?
I got one comment, I've been noticing, they're talking about the litter and stuff, there are people in, in rural areas starting to dump trash again, have you noticed that around Mount Carmel Road, Bridgeport, St. Louis?
Two oh six, I think.
Two oh six, man, too, so.
I have got, I've got a couple complaints last week that didn't seem like we were doing the county areas as much as the, some of the city areas, so I'll try to get with the sheriff and see if we can get those guys maybe redirected, so if any of you got some troubled areas, just send them to me, and I'll try to get those two to the sheriff.
And Anna tries to run at least one project in our districts throughout the year, because she works closely with pick-up project out of the state, out of Montgomery, and she tries to do a community day, or a day for us to all get together and go to each district and help pick up a road.
Being a special member, don't they, last year?
When you pick a school day, so.
It was cold, huh?
If you would pick a Saturday, I'd, I'd have a good time.
Put roadside litter on, on next week's, on next work session, and let's talk about, I think we can come up with some ideas, but maybe we.
Roadside litter.
Yeah, good luck, you know, I built houses my whole adult life, and built houses, people moved here from all over the United States, and that's one thing they ask, is, you know, why don't they litter out, you know?
And we have more people coming in right now.
Yeah, the lady that was representing in Ohio, you know, that was the first thing, I met her about a year ago, and that's the first thing she brought up today, she said, I love this community, but why, why do people throw your trash out on the road? And I thought, well, I don't personally do that, that is something that people know.
I think we, one thing, and I don't know if y'all want to say, and talk about it, but, well, we can talk about it next week, I, I think we need to start some kind of program with the schools, and maybe do a contest to let kids write an essay, or do a poster or something, to try to start.
Anna's already working on that, and so I may have to get her to stay and let her address it, I'll try to move it up to the front.
Donations for a classroom, or donations for the child that, you know, gets, or if we pick two or five or whatever, but that's something that I've been wanting to talk about, and we need to do something like that.
Yeah, I agree, I think it'd be good, start with a school.
I think if you do, if you could work it out with Sheriff Phillips, and then if you do an elementary type school, seeing how they're the ones that take them out and do that, maybe not let them go out, but if you could involve something about them going out with them, or even going out and taking a tour and sending big trucks with Jonathan, a little kid would really look forward to something like that, as being part of the reward or, or, as you say, emotion or some kind of prize.
I don't think I got some companies that can donate some money, you know.
Look, y'all would give us some thought, that'd make sense, and y'all may as well, if they got any idea, we'll give it out there.
I think it's a good idea, because it's like, Mr. Rich said, y'all have all addressed, it's, it's all over the county.
It's starting to see mattresses.
Mattresses.
Cars, TVs, computers and stuff to creep there on the seventy-five.
That's going to be, we talked about what's forward, about getting some cameras, and I mean, personally, I'd like to see the legislator up the five, it's ridiculous right now, I mean, it's, it ain't, it's five hundred dollar kind of thing, and you could dump a whole dump truck load of garbage out, and you're going to get five hundred dollars fine, and to me, that's something that, you just don't scream, don't do that, I mean, somebody got kids dumped out with a.
Some gang cameras or something, you know, some type of surveillance in some of these problem spots and police keeps and folks, that's going to help a whole lot, with big dumping, but just roadside litter where people throw out their fast food, drink bottles, you know.
It's not just a county problem, though, it's a city problem, because about a week and a half ago, I spent like an hour dragging out, which I had blisters, dragging the ditch across from my road with a rake, and got pillows, toys, all kind of crap that was blocking it to keep it from draining, so I did about a hundred yard section.
Brown, anything yet? We get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those are favored? Oh, there's your, there's your, there's your.
Mr. Guffey, hey, this Auburn project, is it going to include updating job descriptions?
Yes.
Okay, and, and will also, will y'all be considering, and Michelle may know this, also, an objective performance standard system for the county, instead of a performance standard system, an objective performance standard system with employee input, you know what I'm talking about?
You're talking about a performance raise?
Performance standards, it's a.
I mean, if there's a performance raise, I don't know what you're saying, if you're saying standard.
Yeah, performance standards is what I'm talking about, is, is looking at the job description and taking, breaking down critical tasks from other tasks, you know, that's not so critical, based on what their job description is, is based on, and being rated on that particular type of system, or it's very similar to a federal system, or some states have this, this system also, that, that it goes a little bit further and just, it covers specifically the critical task of a job description.
Talking about like a base option?
Similar, yeah, but it, but it's critical task or identified, and then they're rated, each employee is rated on that task, with, that coincides, yes, each, no, each employee is rated on, on the task that they perform in their job, Auburn has discussed this with other, other public entities before.
Job classification will take it, it will be a person, if it's got to do with what that job does.
So job descriptions, right, they're not, they're tailored for a job, but it's what I'm talking about, the employee's performance on that job.
That's what I'm saying, there's, there's two different things, there's an employee's performance standard, if you're going to evaluate somebody's performance, give a raise based on it, or, or I guess that's what you're talking about right now.
Well, not, it doesn't necessarily have to be a raise, that's more like a, some rating systems for merit raises are based on that, but.
I thought that was something about merit, but what's, I don't understand what, do you know what he's talking about?
Each job description has a critical, oh, critical task that employee is required to perform, right, and then there's going to be other tasks that an employee is going to perform, it's not so critical, but it's part of the job. In a performance standard system, each of those critical tasks are identified by the supervisor, signed off on the employee, and that is how the rating is performed objectively. You, you follow what I'm saying? Not subjectively, not opinion, but that employee has to perform X amount of, you know, up to standard for those tasks, and in those tasks, he is rated either qualified or not qualified, if you're rated not qualified, if you can't meet the test, in most places, retrain, give him a chance to retrain, and we're not talking about misconduct, we're talking about performance, you know.
Well, I agree, I, I love something like that, I'm sure that that's part of this, from what I've read, it's, I mean, that's something.
I guess what I'm getting at, has Auburn briefed you on anything like that before?
We had our meeting.
No, we haven't had our meeting yet, this is just, and they, you know, they've got several pages here.
We'll be calling.
They're, they're looking at utilizing a factor evaluation system, but if, if we decide to move forward, then Auburn will have to approve it, and then they'll come to the commission for approval, and then they'll come in and meet, meet with us, go over all the details like that.
Right, what, what's your last name, Mr.?
Willis.
Willis?
Willis.
Okay.
She's our HR director.
Right, yeah, yeah, I know that, that, it's mainly, I was curious about it, if Auburn, of course, you. course, you really don't know if they're going to recommend an objective performance standard system, a rating based on that.
No, we'll find out, like I said, when we, when me and Michelle interview with-
And you were saying it's been twenty years since the job description's been updated?
Some of them have been updated.
Yeah, we have some from nineteen eighty-nine. A lot of them are in nineteen eighty-nine.
Oh, yeah. It's a long time.
Our handbook has not been updated since two thousand and five.